We'll call this regular workshop meeting order. Council, you have before you to top the opposed agenda for tonight's meeting now to entertain motion to adopt.
Two seconds.
Any discussion? All in favor signify with say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have three topics on here that we're going to cover and Dr. Woodruff will turn it over to you this time to introduce your first.
Mayor, members of council, this evening we'd like to start with a recreation space update. We're all aware that Jack Em Yet substantial, that Jack Em, let's do that one more time. That Jack Em Yet sustained a substantial amount of damage. Several months ago, Susan brought to you an analysis of how we currently use our facility. That was pre-storm. We've asked her to refresh our memory on that, but I've also asked her to research other facilities that have been built in the general eastern part of North Carolina in the last several years. The purpose of that, at a point in time, you as a council will need to give us direction on what do we do with Jack Em Yet. We know that that was a historic facility. We know that it was a rather small gym. We also know that there'll be insurance money and so forth coming. To set the stage so that you can begin to think, not tonight to make a decision, but to think about your decision in the future of what do you want to build and where do you want to build it, Susan has done a great job of coming up with some information for you. So if you would please.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for a few minutes of your time. I am just going to quickly review, I did a presentation for you actually in January of last year and kind of gave you an up-to-date of where we're at on capacity issues and some challenges that we were having last year. And then again, I'll go over some, some of the benchmark and research we've done on other facilities and then give you an update on Jack Em Yet. So, if you'll bear with me, I did show you last year, these are city facilities. These are just five of our recreation centers. It doesn't include the adult center, which is also full-to-capacity daily programs. You can see just a few of these are what we had in the recreation centers. So those are city-owned and operated. We also operate lots of programs in school facilities. We have a great partnership with the schools. We're very fortunate that we're able to utilize these schools to offer additional programs, to include our after-school programs, before-school programs, and additional athletic programs. So again, this is all pre-Florence and then I'll show you kind of what the effect was after, after Florence. But as you can see here, we have a lot going on between both our facilities and the school facilities. Some of the challenges that we presented to you before was just, again, capacity issues and how do we want to move forward with those challenges. We're kind of maxed out on all of our facilities and the school facilities, so we gave you some options. One option was we could just keep going as we are, we are, and not really kind of grow or expand. That's certainly an option that, that we showed you. We also showed you another option. We could always reduce or eliminate some programs. That would give us a little bit more flexibility. I did go into more detail on some of the challenges at the Commons and all of the programs and all of the usage and all of the rentals and, and all of those sort of things. So by, I guess, reducing or eliminating some programs, it would just alleviate for us to grow a little bit more. And then our last option we presented was to build or renovate some of our facilities. That would obviously be ideal so that we could grow and expand. We could continue to offer programs to our citizens. We could, you know, again, just provide, provide the services that we would like to do in our community and in other areas of our community. We did recommend option three. I don't know that that's a shocker to you, but we did recommend option three, and that was to renovate or build. At the time, which was last year, we did discuss Barn Street. We're at a real critical stage at Northwoods in that corridor. We're at capacity at the recreation center, so we would like to alleviate some of those challenges by having an additional site. Fire Station Two or what we call Barn Street Recreation Center is going to help alleviate some of those challenges because that's a year-round site as well as a summer site for us, and it's an extremely popular location for us. So that's one of the suggestions. We also put in our CIP, a auxiliary space over at the Commons, a gym, additional space over there. It's heavily used in that area. And then a take-your-number, a multipurpose facility, something a little bit on the larger scale somewhere else in the city. Nothing's been identified, but you'll see that all of those are in your CIPs. So all of that was post-Florence. Obviously, those were the, that's kind of the recap of where we were at. With Florence, you're aware of Jack Em Yet. We've lost some, we lost that facility at the, at the time being. We don't, we're not operating anything out of there. It's had a massive consequence on our youth athletics. We basically have had to reduce our basketball program by half. That's not just because of Jack Em Yet, but again, I showed you that diagram where we utilized the schools. And you're probably all aware that Northwoods Park Middle School, I mean, the school gyms have taken quite a, quite a hit with the storm as well. So that in conjunction with Jack Em Yet, we've really had to kind of restructure our programs. The after-school program, we are having to transport those kids from Clyde Irwin, take them to Northwoods every day. So there's lots of things that, that the facility is, we're trying to just work through as best, as best as we can. We're working through those challenges. The other thing I'll mention is, everybody, we want to be good stewards to our community partners and our agencies. So we did have a lot of requests from other schools, other agencies, other groups to utilize our facilities, and we want to help them much, as much as we can. But again, it just put it that extra strain on, we're dealing with our lack of programs and facilities, much less trying to accommodate some of the schools' challenges and some of the area agencies. But I'm proud of what we were able to do and what we were able to offer, so. Again, this is just some snapshots on the fallout from Jack Em Yet. You can see there, we don't, any, any of our night programs, we were not able to absorb. We have had to cancel quite a few programs. We've had to reduce quite a few programs, and we've had to move and relocate the after-school program. Luckily, those kids are still getting an after-school program, but we are having to absorb the transport of those kids, which is fine. We certainly want those kids to be in a good place in the afternoon, so we're able to provide that. That's basically all we're able to still provide. In the summertime, I'll be honest with you, we are, we are actively trying to come up with creative solutions on the summer program and how we're going to provide services. It's important for us to have a presence in that area. It's important for us to provide a location for kids to have a safe place. So we are coming up with Dr. Woodruff's direction. We're coming up with some creative ways. I will say that we're, we were able to secure an additional school to provide some summer programs, so we'll be in Parkwood Elementary School this summer as well, which we've not had, that is an option. So we're able to absorb some of that. Jack Em Yet was a very popular teen site for us. We had 45 teens every some, you know, all summer over there, and those kids need a gym. They need some space to run around, so we're able to move them to the Commons Middle School. So we're shuffling the deck and we're just adjusting as best as we can, but it's, it's, I'm proud of the staff for trying to come up with creative solutions. Again, Northwoods is another one that's kind of absorbing some of those challenges, but we're making it work. I'll just, one of the other things we've noticed is, again, we were at capacity at the Commons before the storm ever hit. Now we're even more so. The challenges of trying to have all of our basketball practices and games at one location every night throughout the week on top of our regular programs has really kind of taken its wear and tear. I remind mayor and council that that building is 22 years old. It seems like yesterday, but I'm sure several of you remember when the ground was broke over there. It's 22 years old. We've had a couple of maintenance challenges. Allen has just replaced the hot water heater. It was up in the roof. It, it proved to be a real challenge to replace. We've had to do some work on the floors. Our concession stand has had some issues. So again, with it being 22 years old and the capacity of which we're operating, it's, it's, it's showing its age, but we're doing the best we can and we're going to keep working on it, so.
Before we leave that slide, talk a little bit about the request that we have accommodated for other entities to use.
Sure. So shortly after the storm, we had several of the, I want to say the high school, the middle schools came over. They utilized the facility. Currently, right now, we're actually housing Infant of Prague and their basketball team, and they're having practices and I believe some games, if I'm not mistaken, as best as we can. The Boys and Girls Club utilized Kerr Street for a period after the storm. We've had just a multitude of agencies try and come through and get space. If we had it, we were able to accommodate, right now, we're accommodating the Infant of Prague during our after-school program. They've been very receptive to kind of sharing the space. But yeah, shortly after the storm, we had some, the middle school, we had the high school, we had everybody, just, everybody was trying to find a program for their basketball, for their basketball programs and volleyball. We had to reduce volleyball as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You know, ultimately, this has been a really good lesson for us. We want to be more flexible. We want to be a little bit more self-sufficient. It's a, it's a challenge, I know, for everybody to rely on everybody else. We want good partnerships, but we want to be a little bit more resilient too and a little bit more independent. We do what we can utilizing all the schools, but when you're faced with reducing your program by half and hearing those concerns of those parents, I think the challenge for us as parents are ready to get back into the groove of things, are ready to get their kids active, and when you go from 50 teens to 25, that's a, that's a disappointment for several people, you know? We don't want to have to give that news, but people are understanding, but we just kind of want to be in a little bit better situation moving forward. And obviously, I want our department to be the best there is on eastern North Carolina, so we want to provide and expand our programs. There's so many new areas that I'd like to explore, but unfortunately, without space and capacity, we're kind of limited, so.
And before we move to space and capacity, we want the public and obviously the mayor and council to understand what Susan has just described to you is the position we're going to be in for at least the next year. There are no quick fixes to the issues that we're facing because of the storm. And as she has shown you, we had spatial needs before the storm. Those have been tremendously impacted. So the public should know that for at least all of 2019, and I'm going to project probably all of 2020, and maybe even into 21, we are going to be at this level with our recreation programs because of facilities, please.
Any questions thus far? I'll get to some, I'll get to some good news now. I did do some research. It was nice to see what other areas have been doing in the last five years. I tried to find facilities and examples that were in comparison between Jack Em Yet and the Commons, and so I'll show you some examples. Some of them we visited on-site and some of them I spoke to personally, but if there's any specific questions, I'm certainly happy to go back to the contact and get more information. We went to this facility, I gotta be honest with you, this was our, this was, it's a beautiful facility. It's Goldsboro Parks and Recreation. They just built this a few years ago. This is probably more aligned with the size of Jack Em Yet, I mean, not Jack Em Yet, the Commons. It has a full-size gym and lots of space on the inside, but it is, meets definitely all the different needs that a community might have and including some rental space. So it's a well-laid out, it's a well-positioned facility, and we were all like, oh, that would be great.
And one thing you'll notice in the picture on the left, it not only has the full-length basketball court, but it also has the ability to play basketball side to side. And that's important because, as you know, in the summer, we host a very large basketball tournament. It not only is at the Commons, but it's at three or four of the high school gyms. So when you do look at these facilities, you can think of Jack Em Yet, which was simply a small, single court with no ability to play side to side, or you can look at the Commons where we already have a large court and the ability to play side to side.
Yes, sir. One thing we liked about this gym, too, is it has a divider, which helps give it a little bit more versatility. So Goldsboro has done a great job with that facility. I did go into Raleigh's new facilities. There's a variety of sizes here, and I just wanted to kind of show the gamut. This is what I would consider on a smaller scale. It's definitely what we would compare to, say, a Northwoods or a Kerr Street, but they did renovate it. It looks nice, and so far, on the two roofs that we have, none of them are flat. So it's just a nice, small example of a, a smaller community center. This one's a little, a little bit medium-sized. I would compare this closer to what Jack Em Yet is. It's about 17,000 square foot. Again, it is newly renovated. I believe this one was an older facility. What I noticed from Raleigh is they've actually renovated just about all of their buildings that were built in the 1970s. So they don't have too many buildings older than 1970. And the reason I mention that is because I kept getting reminded that Jack Em Yet is 60 years old. So, you know, it was just like, oh, wow, 1972. I think this was a 1972 building, and then they completely redid it and rebuilt it, so. And then, this is the inside of that one. And then they, of course, did this beautiful, fabulous, what we consider a multipurpose, multi-complex. It's definitely a full-size complex. It was top-of-the-line inside and out. You can see the price.
Price tag.
You can see the price tag go up.
Double in your Goldsboro.
Yeah, definitely.
Same square footage.
This is definitely top-of-the-line. The facilities inside, the workout facilities, it had a walking track. I mean, it was, it was beautiful.
But if you'll also notice from your construction background, look at the different technique on building this. I mean, they have so much more volume inside there to heat and cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. This one, I wanted to point out, this is a newly renovated one from Greenville. Interesting part about this, and when I talked to them, and this picture doesn't display it very well, but they had what you would consider like a neighborhood rec center in front of it, and then they added on the large gym in the back. So this would almost be the equivalent of taking a Northwoods, for example, and then adding a gym to it. So this is a complete rebuild, but it is a renovation and addition. And I could not, we couldn't get the square footage on this, but I do know that that's what they did on that facility in South Greenville. And you can see their, their gym that they added on. Greensboro, I did go outside of the area a little bit, but I like the square footage of this one. It was 15,000 square foot. Again, similar to what Jack Em Yet is, maybe a little bit larger. Right now, Jack Em Yet is closer to 10,000 square foot. The Commons is 26,000 square foot. Again, it's a nice facility, had lots of multipurpose space and then the gym. You'll notice most all of these have a gym, which is pretty, pretty important. The last but not least, I wanted to point out that this is Wilmington Parks and Rec. This one, they were already scheduled to do before the storm, these two projects. What we have realized is that they have the same architect as we do for our, Jack Em Yet, but what they're doing now is re-looking at these facilities and considering making them shelter and upgrading them to be a possible shelter for their citizens in their community. So the price tag is going to go up, but they're definitely looking at how they're going to retrofit these buildings, given now what they know about evacuating and shelters and facilities. If they're going to renovate, they, they've already said that they're going to do one of these probably to the standards of a shelter.
Did they say what, what mile per hour they're going to use? Like, you know, when we were looking at 140, we were...
They did not, but I can tell you that it's the same architect, and that's what he told us. If we wanted to look at those sort of options with Jack Em Yet, for example, those are the same suggestions he's made to Wilmington because it's the same, the same gentleman. So I just thought that was interesting because I talked both to the gentleman in charge and then the person over here at Wilmington Parks and Rec. And she did say that they were going to try and get one of these to be shelter-ready.
But a, but a difference in cost, 110 mile an hour versus 140 mile an hour is quite a bit, quite a bit of difference in cost.
Absolutely, and they're working on that now, and then they're going to go back to their council and get the difference. And I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure which one of those is going to be the shelter. I don't know that they've even decided which one it is. I think they're going to look at the cost comparison and go from there. But I just thought that was interesting.
It is interesting.
So that was Wilmington. So that's kind of the gamut of facilities. Like I said, those were all within the last five years, and that kind of gives you a range of sizes. Moving, moving forward, you will see in your CIP, obviously, Jack Em Yet is something that we need to address sooner rather than later. We'll need to get some public input, get your input, come back to you and kind of propose what we want to do there. We do have in CIP, multipurpose building complex, something over at the Commons. It might just be a gym to help alleviate some of those challenges, or it could be something else. And then what we, we have a multipurpose complex, something a little bit larger, maybe another Commons somewhere else. We haven't identified any sites or locations or anything like that, but I'd like to get to where we were before the storm and get Jack Em Yet either back up and running, and then obviously, we were still at capacity issues, you know, and my wish list would be to get past those after where we were at.
Excuse me, Susan?
Yes, sir.
Jack Em Yet's court isn't even regulation, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
I guess first off, do you have a need, and do you think that Jack Em Yet area is the best place to, to satisfy your need, or have you, have you even thought that far?
I've definitely thought that far, you know? With the improvements that we've made in that area, with the ball field, with the splash pad, we're getting a restroom, the basketball courts, there's a definite need. I think it's a beautiful area as far as what we've done. The school location being right there is, is ideal because you automatically have a draw of children. I think we're definitely pillars in the community.
Do you need a basketball gym there, or do you just need a, a community center like Longwood's?
I would say that a basketball, a basketball court, basketball, indoor basketball is going to be utilized to the hilt, if it's there or if it's not there. What I can say is if it's there, it's going to be utilized. We do have a youth night program there, and the youth night program operates Monday through Friday, and it is for the teens. It is for the young adults, and they're usually in there every night.
And you've already lost the, the youth because you don't have a regulation court over there.
Well, Susan, I'm wondering, you know, are the kids, the teens that are there, are they local teens, or does it matter whether we build a Jack, Jack Em Yet or whether we go somewhere else?
Well, let me, let me address that. Part of what we, when we, when we look at the facility at Jack Em Yet, one of the first things we need to do is survey our client base over there and figure out what do they really need. You know, if you think of your own neighborhood, when you were raising children, the neighborhood looked one way. Now you've lived in your house 20 years, your neighborhood may look the same, it may look different. So while we know what our programs were, we really don't know who our clients are and what they want to the level that we would want to have before we bring back to you really some options. So part of the discussion that Susan and Michael and I've had is to conduct a survey throughout that whole neighborhood. Conduct a survey with those that we know are users, those that are not. It may be that what comes back is that basketball, indoor basketball is the number-one thing we need to build huge. It may come back that the number-one thing we need is meeting space or cooking facilities or who knows what. So our goal tonight is to give you some education, to show you options, but not to ask you to make any decisions, but to ask you to authorize us to begin the information gathering so that we can then come back with more information to say, it appears this or it appears this. I think simply rebuilding Jack Em Yet as it was is a mistake.
I think in relation to Bob's question, I'd like, I'd be interested in knowing what the school population's been over the last 10 years and what the population of the area has been over the last 10 years since the last census. I suspect it's probably been declining, but I don't know that for a fact.
Well, we do know that Clyde Irwin at one time was what I would consider to be a local elementary school, neighborhood elementary school. We know that that is no longer the case. It is now, if I understand the term correctly, a magnet school.
Magnet school, year-round magnet school. So they do come in from other areas now. Obviously, it's still local kids had first priority to go there, and I'm assuming they are, but they are bringing in kids to the...
But we will do that. As we gather the information, we'll look at demographics and...
Do you take a head count during the summer with your splash pad down there?
We do have it. We were more focused, I could tell you, I'd have to look at the numbers, but it's tremendous. You know, when we first opened it, it was still tremendous last year, even with Northwoods, Northeast Creek, sorry, opened last year, it was still busy all day. What we found was is people had a little bit more elbow room.
And how about the ball field? How utilized is it?
Ball field's utilized quite a bit. We use it, and then it gets rented out quite a bit. We have it for our leagues. The schools use it for their leagues, and it gets used from a team out of Wilmington, Carolina men's baseball.
So would you say that, would you say that the clientele there at the Jack Em Yet is, is more of a regional recreation facility versus a neighborhood?
I would definitely consider it because of the size. It was more of a regional without a doubt.
It brought people from all over.
Yeah, it did. It would definitely brings people, and I'll be honest with you, it's, it's a good location. You know, it's, it's, it's central, it's in the city. I would definitely, because it had the gym, it was definitely a regional. We would put as many basketball programs, given the size of the court and the age of the kids, as we could over there, but because it is not regulation, we were a little, we're limited on who we could bring out there, but we definitely would, given the improvements, we definitely, I would say, regional.
Yeah, you couldn't just think about the New River area. You would have to expand that area because that used to feed from what was called Picket Town to Sandy Run Apartments, because there's nothing else in that area.
So just to kind of segue into the next slide, and that's just kind of give you an update, a current update on Jack Em Yet. Again, Dr. Woodruff indicated it's going to be a while no matter what we do. Obviously, there's got to be a lot of work done. We did get initial report back from the architect, and that was just, what would it take to repair it back the way it was and bring it to code? It's 60 years old. It was not up to, it, you know, has got issues with it. He found some structural challenges with it, and the cost estimate just to bring it to code as it is right now would be about 1.25. That's just to get it exactly as we walked away from it. Obviously, we would need a new floor, and that's taking that into account, but the roofing structure and some of the other things.
Your walls.
You mentioned something, I'm sorry, you mentioned something about the floor at the Commons. When was that floor replaced? It doesn't seem like it was that long ago.
Four, five years?
Actually, it's a little longer. Nine, nine years ago.
When I first came on.
Still warranty on that thing? Is it still warranty on that thing?
Well, the floor has, I'll be quite frank with you, that same floor was put at Jack Emmett, and the floor has worked extremely well. We've had some patching, and that has worked well. And when Susan mentioned that we're having some floor issues up there, it's not to the level that the floor has failed and that we're talking about having to replace the floor. It's actually, you know, it's just, after eight years of use, it gets a little wear on.
That, and I think with the challenge at Jack Emmett is there's been water sitting on it. So we might be able to refurbish, use that floor, but we will need, you know, remediation people to tell us.
On Jack Emmett, you're talking about...
Taking out now. I'm sorry. Commons is holding up great. We love it.
One more, one more question. I know Councilman Jackson mentioned something about a non-regulation court. What makes it a regulation versus non-regulation court?
94 feet.
94, by the way. Okay, so that's the length of the court.
Mayor, I was hoping that it was because the goals were at 800. No, no, it's 140.
So it is, it is too short, and it's not wide enough. So we only have goals on this end, and they're not, that we have, they're short, and then it's actually, the ceiling is too low, so you can't actually have the older kids, because the goals and everything gets hit. So we have a couple of challenges with getting more versatility in that gym.
The other thing that I would remind you of, as we look at what we're going to do at Jack Emmett, you have to also remember, it's a fixed footprint. I mean, there's only so much space there. If you're going to build a much larger gym there, it's going to have to go into the parking, and there's already limited parking. It's just a snowball. We don't want anybody to think that we're, that we're not going to do something positive at Jack Emmett. There are just a lot of issues, and this is, since it's baseball season, I'm going to say, this is inning two. Ending one was the hurricane. Ending two is figuring out, okay, you know, the update. Ending three is going to be surveys and gathering a lot of information. And at some point down the road, we'll be at inning six or seven, which is awarding a bid. But there's going to be a lot of discussions with you and with the public, because of the reality of, you know, you don't want to move into the, into the baseball field, which you've just spent a half an million dollars creating. You don't want to go into the splash pad, you know, it's, it's going to be a, an interesting, an interesting project.
I do, I was, I was going to ask, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to ask about the multipurpose facility. You know the TDA has been working on something for years. And recently, we've begun to sort of dust, dust it back off the shelf, because I've been approached by several commissioners that are now interested in rekindling that discussion on a multipurpose complex with the TDA. Could there be a three-way conversation to maybe city, TDA, and county to build something of significance? Because facilities is a county-wide problem. It's not only a city problem when it comes to sports, for economic development and all these other things. So when we talk about, you know, is there a possibility that something like that? I mean, obviously, we've got some things to do in our own house, but thinking outside of that, there may be some opportunities there on a large scale to partner together, all three of us. You know, at the very least, at least the tourism dollars can fund something of that magnitude, rather than, you know, the local taxpayers.
I think it can be done. I think there's several other examples, probably nationwide, where usage is, you know, utilized by several different, shared usage. I think it's a good, a good opportunity and a good, a good way of looking at getting your maximum resources to use, so without...
When you talk about large-scale stuff, I mean, obviously, you've got to clean up our facilities or our facilities, but when you're talking about those big number millions, you know...
We have a slide in a minute that's going to address that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, you mentioned that, you mentioned a collaborative effort. I attended the chamber, put on a little presentation. They had their folks, the chamber, the sports commission, the tourism and economic development all made a presentation. And the sports director, Scott, mentioned that if he had a, some good locker rooms just at, just at the Commons, how much better that facility would be, and would possibly help bring in some more, you know, perhaps a few more teams or whatever for, for our economic development through sports, so...
There's lots of small things like that that we hear feedback on in regards to the Commons. So, you know, lesson learned.
We're going to be looking at the Commons, you know, that's certainly one of the things we can look at, and, you know, maybe you could work, if the land would work out, I don't know if it would, but you could back, maybe back up another building to it, but a new locker facility's in the middle.
That could be an option.
You know, like it, like it, the school has property at Clyde Irwin.
Yes, sir.
We don't. If we wanted to, if, if you decide, for example, that we, that Jack Emmett is the best location, and certainly, I don't think we want to be putting money back into a building that's not going to serve our needs for the future. I think we need to do something different. But if we look at that, maybe the school would be willing to help fund part of, part of it if they had a need. I don't know that they do, I'm just, just saying.
I think there's certainly some partnership opportunities. I've known that to happen to in other communities. And then some good news is also, if I could just give you another minute or get a minute of your time, we would like to pursue a Golden Leaf application. This is the funding that the legislature did set aside for hurricane relief efforts. Now, it is being shared by lots of other entities, but it is mostly for local governments in their efforts to recover. It's only for a handful of counties, and we're one of them. And I've gotten some good feedback on the grant. It sounds like there's money there available, but we're competing with other entities on vehicle replacements and equipment replacement and some other stuff. But if, with your consent, I would like to pursue it. There is no match for it, but what we know right now is Jack Emmett, if, if we get just the FEMA and the insurance money, but we want to expand, or we want to do something more, then this would be an opportunity to close that gap, so that potentially, the city doesn't have to match or put a whole lot into getting a whole new Jack Emmett, for example. I don't know how much I'm going to ask for, I don't know what it's going to look like just yet, because we really don't know. But what I have gotten from the Golden Leaf organization is that they're, they're very flexible, and that we can go to the table with a request, and a concept, and an idea, and then just kind of move forward from there. But we're not at that point. If you're comfortable with it, I would like to pursue applying for a grant, and then come back to council with, obviously, you know, our concept with Jack Emmett, and then this will be kind of in the works at the same time. This is a first-come, first-served, so putting...
What's your deadline on it? What are you looking at?
Well, they have more money coming to them in June, she said, but they're doing their first round of, they just did their first round of allocations, and then they're doing the second round of allocations in May. And I don't think I'll meet that one just yet.
I'm confused going for a grant application without any objectives.
Well, I think right now, we're comfortable possibly with, Jack Emmett cost is potentially going to say maybe $2 million. If we expand the footprint, or if we do something different, right now, we know we're not going to probably get more than what the value is for insurance, which was 1.1.
Let me, let me address that. What we're asking is, do you have any problem with us working on submitting an application? In order to really understand what the application's going to say, we're going to have to do all the homework we talked about a while ago. We're certainly not ready to file that application this week. Now, what we, what we know is that time is short, and we need to get started literally this week on surveying the neighborhood, gathering information, figuring out what the community is telling us they would like to have, giving you reports back. You don't have to approve the request tonight regarding the grant. The grant has to have sufficient detail in it, so like Mr. Bittner is asking, what is it that we're doing? The answer is, we don't know what we're doing right now. What we do know, though, is it has to be, this grant has to be hurricane recovery-related. So while we may decide in the future, we need a sports complex, or we need another gym at the Commons, that's not eligible. What we're really talking about is, what can, what can we prepare that gives us a good opportunity to compete successfully at the Jack Emmett site?
Okay, I clarify something.
Thank you. You said it much better.
I think, I think we need something back at Jack Emmett. I just don't know whether it needs to be a big gym or what it needs, but we certainly need some sort of community center. I don't think there's any question on that, especially for after-school, at least, so...
We do have another report getting prepared from the architect. When we got the first report, it was just repairing it, repairing it as it is. What we asked him to do was go back and give us some sort of concepts on what it might take to expand the footprint to maybe a regulation gym, or some other ideas he might have with the space. So we might have some ideas in the next four to six weeks on something.
One of the areas I think we need to look at in terms of demographics is, we seem to have the city fairly well covered, but we have a big hole in recreation coverage in the Brinwood area.
That might be an option for moving. Absolutely, moving forward.
Don't they utilize Northeast Creek?
No, Northeast is on that one hedge.
No facility, though.
There's no indoor facility.
No indoor facility, you're right.
Let me show you the last slide that we had. Let's talk about money for a minute. Normally, we do capital projects out of the 4-cent fund. We try to stay away from debt. You can see Bishop Pun Gail's latest numbers, that for every one cent, we generate 353,000 and change. So every penny that we charge on the tax rate, it generates about $350,000. 4 cents, obviously, 1.4. Over a four-year period, 5 and 1/2 million dollars. When you look at debt, and this is why I think it's important, because we, we do talk about partnerships with the TDA, we talk about partnerships with the county. At the end of the day, the amount of money that you have in any year tells you how much money you can afford to borrow. Now, if it's a sports complex of $30 million, I'm going to tell you, you don't have the money. You don't have the money if you combine TDA and the city, and maybe you can get it from the county. These are what I consider to be realistic numbers. A $5 million project, and here, we're not talking about Jack Emmett, we're just talking about any project. You've seen some examples. A $5 million project funded through a 20-year bond, roughly $400,000 a year. That's at the current rate. Gail got these numbers off of the rate manual yesterday. So these are pretty current. What I'm saying to you is, if it's a city-only project, this is about as much money as the management can tell you that you could recommend spending, but you're pledging it over 20 years. We've said to you before, we would prefer to pay as much cash as possible. Why? Well, 20 years is just a long time. Let's say for discussion purposes, that the city was able to come up with $400,000, and the TDA was able to come up with $400,000. Well, then you're into a 10-million project. A 10-million project doesn't get you the sports complex. I mean, the last number that I saw was 16 million, and my numbers, it's actually 30 million. It doesn't really matter what, who's right. The point I'm making is, this is the reality of money. This is the reality of money.
I think one difference is, is that with TDA, the money's not coming from local taxpayers. So I think anytime you can utilize those funds, you're better off than local funds, if you can do it.
If you can do it.
If you can do it. And our thoughts were, we can leverage, these are just rough numbers, 8 million, county leverage 8 million, city could leverage 5 million, and all of a sudden, you've got a 20-plus million dollar project. This is hypothetically. Instead of, you know, a small gym that's inadequate, conversations that obviously that need to have. But I, in my opinion, you know, the way that we're being strapped with a low tax base, not expanding tax, tax base, and all these unfunded mandates that are coming our way, you know, is spending 4 cent on recreation the right thing to do, and these other obligations? Those are conversations, obviously, we have to have during budget cycles, but we've got a lot of pressure.
We've got a lot of pressure, and they're definitely the kind of conversations we're going to have over the next two months. You know, again, where we go with Jack Emmett, to me, that's, that's the current discussion. That's a discussion.
Sorry.
Pardon. I know the conversation chokes you out, Susan.
Yes.
All those millions make sense.
Well, when you were talking about bringing it back up to pre-Florence dollars, you know, at some point in time into, hopefully not so far distant future, you're going to get some reimbursement back from FEMA insurers-wise, correct?
Well, from the insurance carrier and from FEMA. That's correct. So you can assume that you're going to have somewhere around a million and a quarter in money that you're being paid from other sources. And I think that that money will most likely, you know, go directly back into whatever we're going to build at Jack Emmett. It would be most appropriate to do that. Additional city money you may decide to put towards Jack Emmett, you know, that'll be dependent upon what you decide to build there. The important thing about this slide, though, is to try to keep us all focused on reality. The TDA brings in about $900,000 a year. 2/3 of that, if I remember correctly, can be spent. So using simple math, that's $600,000. Already, the TDA is obligated to $150,000 a year for the Sturgeon City Building, so you're down to $450,000. I don't know that you want to obligate all $450,000 for 20 years, but even if you did, you know, this is just the reality numbers that tells you, generally, you know, for every $5 million, you're going to have to find $400,000, whether you find it from TDA, whether you find it from the county, whether you find it from the city, or whether you find it from someone who just decides that every year, they like to give you $400,000, you know. But, you know, where we're headed with this project is in the following way. Number one, we're going to prepare a survey. We'll send you copies of that survey, so that you can give input as to whether you think we're asking the right questions. Number two, we're going to put together an approach on how we're going to use that survey. And we may actually have different surveys for different age groups, or for different, you know, the people who live in the neighborhood may get one survey, the people who use the surveys may get another survey. But the first thing we have to do is gather information on Jack Emmett, how we really need it used. The second thing, we're going to then work with John Sawyer, the architect, who has already been hired to begin some work on the rehab of Jack Emmett, and come up with some cost estimates that, okay, if you do option one, here's the cost. If you do option two, here's the cost. If you do option three, here's the cost. That will all come back to you, so that you can give us direction as to which way we're going to spend the money. I know the one thing that the mayor and council are not going to do is turn their back on the neighborhood. You have been a very strong supporter, you have spent well over $2 million in the last few years over there, you have built phenomenal facilities. What we have to decide, though, is, what does that neighborhood really need for the next 20 years? And that's the staff's responsibility to get you the data, so that we can document, so that you can decide. Do you like that game plan, or do you want to do it differently?
Sounds like a game plan, please.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Susan's done a great job, her staff. I would like for all of her staff to at least raise their hand over the floor in the mouth tonight.
Sorry.
I noticed while Susan was choked up, then the other choked up.
Oh, my God, sorry. We have all of the divisions here represented, except for Nick, especially Dan. So athletics, and admin, and Joe with adults, and then Melody over there with the center. So thanks to them, we're represented.
We can take a quick break, and we'll come back with capital improvements.
Sounds good.
I am so sorry.
This project started this past calendar year. It's currently underway with drywall installation being put in, some site preparation. It's moving along very quickly now that we've gotten past the hurricane. We're looking at this project being completed hopefully in May time under the current schedule. And this picture was taken about two weeks ago, so there's been a lot of improvements that have happened since then. Another project that we currently have is the Henderson Drive Infrastructure Improvements Project. Anybody that's been down Henderson Drive here lately definitely knows that there's construction underway.
We apologize.
The good news is, is this project is moving along quickly. It's on schedule. So this project, we are repairing and replacing water and sewer lines in preparation of NCVOT to come in and resurface the roadway. The... So currently, the project did get kicked off in January. We're looking at still being completed in April, so we're about 40% complete. Traffic is shifting every day, as everybody may not know, but it is flowing smoothly.
I got a good question for you.
Yes, sir.
How much worse is it gonna get than what it is already?
For what it is now, it shouldn't get any worse.
And XY has done an excellent job of handling the school activities out there, especially giving the traffic shows.
Another big project that we have currently underway is the Jacksonville Riverwalk Marina. This project will be a new marina area down at the Kerr Street area. It will include a new boardwalk, pier and gazebo, boat slips, kayak launch, and a pumpout station for boats coming to the area. This project came into some difficulties when it first started with some subsurface conditions that weren't picked up by the Geotech report. There were some complications with the materials that were originally being used. They had to be switched out, so which put significant delays on the project. We ultimately ended up hitting a lot of rock that we didn't anticipate underneath the water. So with this project now, we are moving forward and it should be completed in May as well.
We had a lot of challenges with that, as you're aware, with Hurricane Florence also. The good news is, we didn't have a whole lot of damage to what was under construction, but we did lose a lot of construction materials. They floated away from the site. And the items that you see down there are essentially what remain to be completed. The kayak launch is currently being fabricated, so that'll come in as a unit and set. And then the pumpout unit will also come in. So we're waiting on some things to arrive also to complete the project. And then important, you know, thing to note is, the contractor has offered, because of some of the delays that were not all their fault or our fault, but because of some of the delays we've experienced, they have, they're going to partner with the city to demo the marina because of all of the damage as a result of the hurricane. So they'll actually demo, and then the city will just be responsible for hauling and disposal of the material.
So some of the projects that we have under design, we have several projects. We have the Newbridge Street Streetscape Project, the Bryn Mawr Forest Main Relocation Project, our Jack Emmett Recreation Center Project, our well, wellhouse and well upgrades projects. And we will touch on some of these here in upcoming slides. The Decatur Lift Station Elimination Project, which is over in Northwoods, the Holiday City Mobile Home Park, the Ellis Lift Station Upgrades, the Leonard Street Culvert Replacement, and the Train Depot Repairs. We have a lot of projects currently under design right now that we are, we are working towards. The Decatur Lift Station Project will be, is a project to eliminate an existing pump station in the Northwoods area with a new gravity sewer port, sewer that will connect to existing. The benefits of this project is we're gonna be eliminating a pump station, which is a point of failure in our system, and it'll reduce operation costs. We're currently working on the design of this trunk sewer and will be hopefully ready for construction in FY19. Or FY20, I apologize.
The good thing is, we already have easements along that section, so we don't have to go out to secure additional easements. We'll be working on existing utility easements.
Our Holiday City Mobile Home Project, we are looking at INI issues in the sewer basin. We established a problem there with the sewer pump station. We just have overflows that could occur in that area. So when we first looked at this project, we were gonna be simply upgrading the pump station. Since we have identified this project, we have found that there are bigger problems than just repairing the pump station. So we are currently looking at the basin itself and doing some flow monitoring and trying to establish problems or identify the INI problems in this area.
Before you move on, Dr. Woodruff and I actually had a meeting last week with representatives from Holiday City. And one of the things that we've been working very closely with them is they're eager to address the INI issues, the inflow and infiltration issues that they have. As you may know, the sewer system in Holiday City is private, other than one line that runs down Daisy, and then one line that runs down the back street, which is Galiya, to the actual pump station. Everything else in there is private. And we saw large peak factors during some flow monitoring. So the, they, Holiday City hired their own engineering firm. They went out and installed flow meters within their system and have actually made some significant improvements and investments in their system. So the city has reinstalled our flow meters as of, I think, this week, may have been the end of last week. And we'll be monitoring that for two or three months to see if the improvements they've, they've made will make any difference. And really, the problem with Holiday City Pump Station is that with the inflow and infiltration, we didn't have enough wet well room. So if we address some of the inflow and infiltration, this may be a project that we can back off of. And we may need to do some minor adjustments, but other than that, we may be able to keep some of the existing infrastructure.
So our Ellis Lift Station Upgrades Project. This project originally started as a much smaller upgrades project, just trying to get access to the site during flood situations and raising a few minor things and working at the, with the biofilter. This project has since evolved, since Hurricane Florence, and we experienced this significant flooding in this area. So we are looking at those options now to do a complete rehab of the station, whether it's completely raising everything inside the station to above that floodline, possibly relocating the station, but we are trying to come up with options for upgrading the station. And we're currently under the design of that as we speak.
And before you leave that side, the water there in Hurricane Florence was over that vent. It was to the vent right on the bottom right-hand side. I don't know if the drawing tool is on, but somewhere right in there. It was two to three feet in the building. So we had significant damage to electrical equipment inside the building. And as you can see, it's already raised. So we're looking at alternatives for waterproofing the building and being able to monitor it remotely and possibly do some other controls. So this, this is a project that we are seeking help with. Hazard mitigation, I think, is the group from FEMA. So we are in talks with FEMA, trying to see if there's any funding available for projects like this, because it does go to resiliency of the system.
Our Leonard Street Culvert Replacement Project. This is a storm drain that located underneath Leonard Street in the roughly behind Tight Line Marina. It was identified that this storm drain was collapsing, and we have brought in an engineer to give us recommendations for repairs. We've since found that the culvert was extremely undersized. It is a tidal area. We are very near to completion with the design of this project. So we'll be replacing the two 24-inch culverts with four new pipes underneath that roadway. And it'll help the tidal flow in there as well. And we are expected to go out to pour construction on this project probably this coming fiscal year. Your well and wellhouse upgrades.
You want me to take that one?
Yeah.
So we had a project to look at wells in the 258 area, and some of those were built in the 60s and 70s. And not much had been done to those buildings. You know, they were little brick buildings, so the brick and block were okay, but the roof structures, the controls inside, those, those type of things were failing. Before we invested much money in the wellhouses, we decided it would be appropriate because Joe Cram at the Water Plan, or Chief Plant Operator, had noted that he didn't have the flows that we had had at one time from some of those wells. So we decided to go in and camera those wells. The problem we ran into is that Joe's correct. The flows that he's currently seeing is not what he was once seeing. And as such, all three of the wells that we've camered basically came back and said that you can continue to operate the wells, but once you have problems with them, you won't be able to rehabilitate them. So we have another project that we're looking at combining this with that we had kind of had on hold pending some outcomes from the Black Creek study that we've done. And I think you'll see a slide on that in just a minute. But there's some thought of maybe instead of rehabbing the well sites, what we need to do is look at abandoning, abandoning a couple of wells and installing one new well and try to recapture capacity that way instead of putting money into wells that are likely to fail in the very near future. So we're, we've got a little bit of an additional part to this piece of the study. But based on the outcome, this may be one of those projects that we'll look to amend in the upcoming capital improvement plan for FY20.
The Train Depot Repairs, this is a project that came to light from Hurricane Florence. We had significant damage to the roof structure of this building from the hurricane, and we are looking at possible upgrades to this, the roof building itself rather than just doing patches. We're currently assessing the roof as we, we're currently assessing the roof, and we should have recommendations as to how to move forward here in the coming months.
One of the things we're looking at is standing seam metal in lieu of shingles.
And one of the reasons for that is the, the older part of the depot was actually with lap boards. So today, obviously, we use plywood sheets. Well, the lap boards have spaces between them. And one of the reasons why so many of the shingles blew away is that a lot of the nails went in between the lap boards. So there really wasn't anything holding, holding the shingles there. So the choice is, do you go back and reboard the entire roof, which is expensive, or do you change the roofing material? So we're looking at going to a standing seam. Please go ahead.
So some of the projects that we currently have on hold are those projects that you see before you. The Sturgeon City Asbestos Removal Project, the Nano Plant Chemical Tank Repair, the Black Creek Raw Water Supply Wells, that's when it's contingent on the wells, the Barn Street Recreation Center and the larger project, the Parkwood Regional Pump Station and Western Sewer. So our Sturgeon City Asbestos Removal Project, we did bid this project out shortly before Hurricane Florence. The bids for this project came in well above our available budget. So what we've done is we've come back and we're trying, we are assessing other options for how to remove this asbestos without such a complicated repair.
What's this, the existing admin building? Your old admin building?
Yes, sir.
In the lab area, in the lab.
Yeah, both parts. So we are coming up with those, trying to come up with options now and hopefully have something back out to bid shortly.
Is that something you need to do? I mean, are you disturbing, where is the asbestos and what, you know, are you disturbing things? Is that?
That, that's one of the things that we're looking at is, I know that asbestos is in the floor tiles, which some of them are covered by carpet, so it's encapsulated. So there are some things that we may could push out. There's, there's some discussion, maybe we do the Sturgeon City portion now and the lab portion later. So we're looking at everything, but it's also in countertops and for the lab and other areas that might necessarily be.
Yeah, but if you're not, if it's, if it's, as you say, it's intact, you know, you don't have to do it and you're trying to save money, it's certainly one place to look at, so.
Yes, sir.
With the Nano Plant Chemical Tank Base Repair Project, this is another project that we did advertise. When the bids came back in, they were double of what our engineers' estimate was, which far exceeded our available budget. We've since gone back and we are reevaluating how we're gonna advertise this project. A lot of the cost came into the execution of how the tanks would be installed. So one of the things that we've looked at is having some in-house services do some of the, it had to do a lot with how the acid was gonna be stored during construction. So we're trying to come up with those options now so we can get that construction cost down. The Black Creek Raw Water Supply Project, this one is on hold, as Wally was stating, because there's so many factors going into this. We are waiting on the study for the reduction to come back. So once some more answers have been provided from the state as to how we can move forward, then we will push this project.
We do have good news from the monitoring well project that we did. We had a meeting with the state, presented all of our findings, and there are four criteria they use to decide whether they will stay off the last reduction, which now we've had to take the last reduction, but we can, you know, we can do a temporary permit at any time to, to gain capacity back out of the Black Creek. And the discussion went very well. They basically are looking for us to provide two other, you know, the biggest hurdle we thought we would have to overcome was the rate of withdrawal from the Black Creek. Was it recharging fast enough, which is what initiated this in the beginning? And then what are chloride levels doing in the aquifer? And we satisfied both of those criteria, which were the two hardest. Now we've just got to provide a schematic of all of our wells that were built in the 50s, 60s and 70s, showing what the pump intake levels are and those kind of things. So that's an exercise in futility of finding paperwork and some other things. So that'll be time-consuming, but should not prevent us from actually being able to recover some of the capacity we've lost.
Are we still in a deficit status with?
We actually are, we have a positive account.
Since when?
About a year after the plant came online. We were running the deficit because of the plant. Now, as of, there was legislation changes in 2018. I don't remember what month, but it basically said that you can no longer add to your bank because there are some entities that moved away from the Black Creek almost immediately. And they had billions of gallons of banked water, is what they called it. And so with the legislation changes, they didn't take anything away, but you can't continue to add to it. So if we go over, we can, you know, if we go over a permitted amount, we can use from our bank, but we just can't add any more to it. But we do have a positive bank. We do not have a deficit.
One thing we would like to do in the near future, though, is have a joint session between the city council and ONWASA, their board, so that the consultant who has been working on this study can come and make a presentation to both groups. Hopefully, we'll be able to set that up, probably, what do you think, April?
Oh, I know that Mr. Hudson was looking after their budget sessions, so. We'll get back to you on that one.
So our Barn Street Recreation Center, this project, we were ready to go for bids shortly before Hurricane Florence hit. One thing that we noticed before we went out for bid was, not only was the architect's estimate right at our available budget, but we saw a very positive number in the, what, construction ultimately was costing more at the time. So we kind of sat on this project just a little bit, hoping that construction costs would go down and Hurricane Florence hit, and now we are where we are. But the good news is, is we've had a couple of construction projects come in in the past month, and so we are looking at possibly re-advertising this project in the next month or so, based on those numbers that were coming in for construction.
But I will also say, this is one of those, since it's a recreation project, that we will continue to place on hold unless we see the competitive bids substantially positive, because this money may need to be redirected towards your effort to Jack Emmett.
And you're getting to use it for storage for the Henderson project. I see you got a water container. We're using all of our facilities to our maximum right now.
That's good.
The Parkwood Regional Pump Station and Western Sewer, I believe everybody hopefully is aware of this project. This is a very large project to put in a new regional collection system on the western side of Jacksonville. This project is gonna help reduce a lot of the sewer coming through our existing infrastructure now and hopefully alleviate some of the stresses there. This project, we are currently on hold based on a, the latest sewer model that was done for this area. It showed there are, it's not as bad as we were originally thinking. So, but we are in talks with the engineer. They are working on that sewer model as well and looking at the, there's possibility for that future construction at the Gum Branch Western Boulevard area coming online. So we're monitoring that as well to see when to move forward with this project. But based, because the project is so large, we're looking at doing this project in phases rather than as one large project as well.
And part of what our model showed is that green section you see in the right-hand corner is the gravity portions, and it follows some of our existing gravity line. And it, the latest model shows that if we upgrade that section first, it may be that we can extend this project out or hold this project off a little bit longer, because that's one of the bottlenecks for some of that future construction in the Henderson, or sorry, in the Gum Branch and Western Intersection area. So this is one that we're trying to carefully balance. It is definitely needed, and our model shows that it is needed to offset some of the other improvements that we'll, we need to make. But given the cost, we're trying to carefully balance the need and the time. We do have some time. Our latest model actually shows that we can get most of the vineyards project through the existing system, especially if we were to upgrade this section.
I'd also like to- Where you at, man, geographically, where you're at here?
See, this is Gum Branch Road.
Where, okay.
And this is Western Boulevard. So this green line where it comes up and touches Western actually extends under Western Boulevard.
Okay.
So that's kind of the start of the project. And then it follows Williamsburg Plantation. And it's actually, it looks like it's on Williamsburg Plantation. It actually is in existing easements that we have that run along the border of Williamsburg Plantation. And it comes down to, this is the location of the pump station, and it's kind of in the back of Woodlands Park. So if you, if you were to extend Williamsburg Plantation out and where the jazz of soccer fields are at Woodlands Park, the pump station kind of sits right in that area. And then the forest main goes all the way out to Land App Site.
One thing I, I just realized that I do not believe that I have followed up with the request that you made about a month ago for us to show you the theoretic gallons per day produced by a home versus the reality of water meters. So we will get right back on that. My apologies for not getting that to you.
We've been working on the information. Sabrina's actually sent me some emails, so there is stuff going on.
We'll get that to you quickly.
And yeah, and I, just since we're talking water and sewer, since, since you've got this on hold and various other things and you'll present, you know, we raised the rates. We voted last year, I guess, during the budget. So you'll be presenting a new model run of that too, just seeing how that, how all the rates.
Actually, Gil was just filling me in tonight that we're getting very close to running the model. She's got everything plugged in for the new capital improvement, the proposed FY20.
And the good news is, the rates don't go up that much more than what we had projected. Just kidding. He said it, not me.
That's Clemson, man.
So just to recap, our FY19 CIP summary, we have five projects currently under construction. We have nine that are in the design or planning phase. And we have five projects that are on hold, so to say. So coming up in the next month, a few months, we're gonna see, we're moving into the FY20, '29 CIP schedule. We'll be presenting the draft CIP to council here towards the end of February and, well, in March, which will be taking the draft CIP to the respective advisory committees for approval as well, with hopefully an adoption of the new CIP in, in April. So it's just, y'all have any questions for me?
Good report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last thing on the workshop is, we would like to give you an update on our ADA transition plan. As you know, we received money from the federal government relative to transit as well as highway projects. Because of that, we're required to make sure that we have a transition plan. Deanna's gonna give you an update, please.
Good evening. So I'm just, I think we're all familiar with Americans with Disabilities Act, but the ADA became law in 1990, was later amended in 2008, and consists of five titles. Title two being, what we're most interested in at this point is public entities. So the purpose of ADA is to mandate the elimination of discrimination against those with disabilities, to create some standards, establish the government's role in enforcing these standards, and then also the congressional oversight to address the discrimination. So you may recall that we've had a transition plan in place since, since ADA became law. And we've updated it periodically over the years. And most recently, we've been notified that we had to make some additional changes. So our plan, they were asking for us to identify an ADA coordinator, to identify and designate a person, and to also to develop a plan to inventory our assets. And so what we've done is, we've taken that guidance and the new 2018 plan, which we presented to you as in draft form in October, we expanded upon that 2008 guidance. And with the focus on communications, public buildings, and right-of-way, we also established a process of inventory, inventorying our assets as well as the schedule. And most importantly, we sought public involvement on the plan. And so this was a large effort from a number of people on staff. And you can see here that it consists of members from finance, building inspections, public services, media, et cetera. It was a big team effort to get to this point. And so again, the three areas that we focused on, communication. So how do we communicate with our citizens, both in writing, on telephone, social media, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera? Looking at our public buildings, from the minute you enter our parking lot to accessing the threshold into the building, to once you get into the building, are you able to access those services that we're offering? And then our rights-of-way, so you have trails, sidewalks in our, on our transit bus stops. So in the latter part of October, we had a public involvement section in this room. And we opened it up to the community, we publicized it in all of the outlets, and we did get a few citizens to come and share some insights. And I have to tell you, that was actually very enlightening. We learned at this point that although we do, okay, there's room for improvement. And I think that was probably the most eye-opening experience for me personally. I personally learned that we could do a better job in interacting with those that are hearing impaired. We had a few gentlemen.
Which side?
We had, we had a few people who came and we did, we realized that we needed to do better, you know? And so that's part of this plan, is looking at some strategies and how do we identify meeting the needs of all of our citizens. and how do we identify meeting the needs of all of our citizens. We also sought input from our stakeholders here in the community. We reached out to Almazok County, the hospital, the community college, Trillium, LifeQuest Disability Services. And the key contact that we learned about was Ms. Daisy Rivenbart from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. We learned of her solely from that public involvement meeting that we had with the citizens. And that is an excellent resource that's going to allow us to partner with them on training and learning how to interact with those that are either visually impaired or hearing impaired. So excellent resource and we met with her once already. So we envision a great partnership going forward. So we've talked a lot about tonight about the hurricane and the impact that it's had on us. And so we too have had to take a step back on the plan that we initially presented to council. Initially, we presented a short-term implementation and a long-term implementation. Well, realizing the hurricane actually is impacting not just what we wanted to do with ADA, but us as a whole community and as a city, we decided to actually stage it a little bit. So we have the short-term implementation is we're going to kick off things this year. So with that, we're going to identify strategies and resources, training and educational opportunities, some of which we've already started discussing. You'll see in the upcoming budget, a request for a closed captioning system. Also a Phase One implementation in the CIP. And that Phase One implementation is kind of the, some of the easy hardscapes was what we're calling it. So that would be restriping a parking lot, putting up some new handicap signs, some of the easier, low, low, low hanging fruit, so to say. And then also, we've met, we've talked about NC DOT TAP funding, which is an excellent strategic partnership that DOT's cost will be updating and installing over 100 curb ramps here in the city of Jacksonville at their cost. Some of which have, were, these facilities were identified in our plan. And that is to occur hopefully in, I think it was by beginning of summer. That's the first, first round of funding. But we're going to continue that partnership hopefully over the next couple of years. So this is something new we added. So the goals that we initially identified as the quote "short-term", and those goals we were going to try to get done within the next year, we've pushed those out a little bit. And that's kind of twofold. It allows us to get a better idea of exactly how we want to install these improvements, but it also allows us the flexibility in staggering that funding that's necessary as well. So you'll see some of these strategies in next year's CIP for FY '21. And then with that, you'll be identifying specifically the buildings, the handicap parking, the sidewalk, little pieces of sidewalk connectivity, the truncated domes and curb ramps. So basically, everything that you previously saw in the plan, we've kind of pushed that out for, to '21 to allow us funding opportunity and to allow us to better schedule how we're going to make those improvements, actually install those. We have been in talks, as I mentioned, with DOT. We're actually looking at two more cycles of funding with the TAP funding with those curb ramps. And the MPO is actually currently doing what we're calling as the Henderson Drive ADA feasibility study. And if you've ever been down Henderson, which not driving, but actually walking or on your bike, it's not, that's, even though we have sidewalks, it's not handicap accessible. So with the MPO, we're actually looking at a feasibility study. What would it take to make that ADA accessible? Our goal is, one, if we can pick it up with the TAP funding, excellent. If not, then the MPO is going to put that back into the prioritization process through NC DOT as a much larger capital project. So our goal is, we realize that that is a heavily utilized sidewalk, neighborhood area and schools. And it's important that we try to make that ADA accessible. And then the long-term implementation, this day is the same. We'll continue identifying those larger capital improvement projects, some of which we discussed today, retrofitting the buildings, anything that doesn't currently meet ADA standards, we're going to go ahead and bring that up to, up to standards for today. Continue our partnership with NC DOT during the resurfacing projects or the prioritization process and continue expanding upon those collaborative partnerships, relationships that I previously mentioned. So what's coming up? So the updated plans online that, that kind of updates the pushed-out schedule a little bit. Our goal is to bring the plan before you for adoption in March. But in the meantime, staff's going to start trying to identify some of these goals and milestones. We'll be getting that working group back together and then some to start really looking at the specific areas. And then just as a reminder, this is just the start. The easy part has been done, that we did that initial inventory. The hard work begins because now we have to continue doing the inventory, continue doing improvements, notating and documenting everything. And then this plan gets administratively updated yearly. And then it comes back before adoption, before the board every five years. So that was my quick overview on the ADA. So we, you'll see lots of, lots more to come.
You're right, Henderson is a tough, I'm biking through there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a job to get over that bridge and do the cleaners and come around and all that.
The good news is that the vast majority of your buildings are in compliance.
Yes.
From a building standpoint, as Deanna said, we want to look at our parking lots. Many of them have not been restripped in many, many years. You'll see that in the capital program. Our real goal relative to what I'll call our city hall public type buildings has got to be to address the things such as, how do we better communicate with hearing impaired? How do we communicate with the deaf and blind? So those are the type of what I'm going to call programmatic goals that you'll be seeing relative to your buildings. But you're to be commended that almost all of your public buildings that are accessible, there's very little to be done there. It's the programmatic side of engaging and including people. Nice job.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, we would like to go into closed session for a minute. John, do you want to come in?
Close session.
Second. Second.